Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Before we get started, I want to offer congratulations to our colleagues Jose Tossado and Bud Williams for successful reelection yesterday. Congratulations. Very lucky to have them. My name is Michael Fenton. I'm the president of the Springfield City Council. We are here today to talk about new legislation that's being sponsored by myself and nine other councilors, more than a supermajority of the city council here in Springfield, to revive what was once formerly commonly known as the Springfield Police Commission. Before we get into that, I'd like to introduce the folks that are here with us today. We have Attorney Henry Thomas, who's the former chair of the UMass Amherst School System and the current president of the Urban League. Thank you for joining us, Attorney Thomas. We also have State Representative Jose Tossado, former member of the Police Commission as well as Attorney Thomas, current state representative, former president of the Springfield City Council, very involved in some of the prior efforts to revive the Police Commission. And in addition to my colleagues, first we'll say at-large Counselor Bud Williams, who is now state representative-elect. We have Councilors Justin Hurst, Caterie Walsh, Orlando Ramos, Adam Gomez, and Counselor Timothy Allen. So, oh, I'm sorry, Melvin, I didn't see you back there. And Counselor Melvin Edwards. So, the 10 of us represent the cosponsors of this new legislation. There's copies that are available here for you. I'm going to tell you a little bit about it. But first, by way of background, the Police Commission was abolished by an act of the Control Board during their reign, during the tenure of Mayor Ryan. The system prior to that enactment by the Control Board presided over a police department, hiring, firing, promotion, and personnel decisions for decades. Since that day, there has been a variety of cries from the community for more transparency and fairness in disciplinary decisions, promotion and hiring decisions in the department. There were proposals made. I've only been on the city council since 2010, but my research shows that there's been proposals made in 2009, again in 2010, in 2011. There were three proposals that were drafted and considered at length by the community. Counselor E. Henry Twigs, who is not here with us today, but who is a cosponsor of this new legislation, co-chaired a committee that met several times in the community. There was a stenographer. I have reviewed all of the meeting minutes and notes from those diligent efforts that took place back in 2011. The neighborhood committees that were appointed included testimony from a variety of residents and stakeholders, including folks like Bob McCullum, Jack Wojcik, Edgar Alejandro, Nick Camerata, David Jarnes, Archbishop Timothy Paul, Arlene Rodriguez, Frank Ryan, Terry Aberdale, Joe Gentile, the city solicitor, the then-police commissioner Bill Fitchett, and many, many others. That vote failed by a very slim margin, seven to six. Subsequently, in February of 2014, in an effort initially led by Counselor Bud Williams, there was a proposal to revive the Police Commission. There was a special meeting that I called that March, many will remember, was canceled abruptly when the mayor announced the premature appointment of now Commissioner John Barbieri. This is not new, ladies and gentlemen. This is legislation that we have been working on for the better part of the last decade. We're very proud to bring it here today. This is not a vote of no confidence in Commissioner Barbieri. It is not a commentary or a reflection on the recent police misconduct videos that have been released. This is about creating a better system, a better system for transparency and for accountability in the department, as well as for the overall management and operation of the departments. The previous CPHB system that was in place was one that was designed to fail from its inception. The system was predicated on a promise, and that promise was that the police commissioner would always either meet or exceed the recommendations of the CPHB. We have now found out the dangers that our community can be exposed to when that does not happen, or when that process is circumvented. It is the very thing that folks like E. Henry Twigs, Bud Williams, and many other members of this body were worried about when they introduced this legislation several times over the course of the past decade. Today, we're here to say that the mayor's recent executive order, effective March 3rd of this year, which removes all disciplinary recommendation powers from the CPHB, is unconscionable. It totally thwarts the spirit of having open and transparent communications regarding police discipline, and we believe that a new Police Commission will bring transparency and fairness back into this process, enabling the Springfield Police Department to once again enjoy its good name and to restore pride in that department amongst the citizens of the city of Springfield. So, with that said, the copies are available here. I will tell all of you that it is, in many contexts, the same legislation as we had prior to that Control Board order in the late, early 2000s, and that involves a five-member commission, all appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the city council. They will be charged with the oversight of all police department matters relative to discipline, hiring, firing, promotion, and the like. Before I turn it over to whoever of my colleagues would like to speak first, I do just want to say that this is an important time for Springfield. I am hopeful that we can come together as a community in passing this legislation. I'm hopeful that the mayor will join us in signing this legislation in an effort to create cooperation in government. This is not about power struggle. This is not about politics. This is about fairness. This is about transparency in the police department, and we think that this legislation can accomplish it. So, it's my sincere hope that this will be something that the community can rally behind, as it has in the past. This is the most support we've ever enjoyed from the community, from leaders like Mr. Tossado and Mr. Thomas, and from all of these members that are with us today on the city council, as well as Counselor Twigs. And I hope sincerely that the mayor will join us in these efforts and see past some of the short-sightedness that we've had on this subject in the past. So, with that, before we take any questions, I do want to offer it over to whoever would like to speak. I don't have a speaking program that's organized, so...
You do have the votes to override the mayor's veto if that happens.
We do, and we'll get to questions after everybody else speaks.
Thank you. Just very briefly, I'd just like to commend Council President Fenton and all his colleagues for moving forward on this legislation. Again, as he said, this is not a conviction of the Springfield Police Department, the fine men and women who every day put their lives on the line in order to give us a quality of life where we feel safe in this city. I, myself, have served four years as vice chairman of the Springfield Police Commission. It's not a perfect system. It's not a panacea, but it's certainly a much better system than we currently have. It provides accountability. It provides transparency. But more than that, it allows the citizens who get police to have an input in terms of the policies and procedures and some oversight and monitoring of the Springfield Police Department. Again, in the past, when I was there, and I believe Henry Thomas can speak to that as well, there were members of the community, I remember Mr. Yusuf Mohammed, even Reverend Swan at times, who basically confronted us, the Police Commission, in terms of glitches that occurred in the system. However, what that did was it actually allowed a pathway for communication to occur and where we could resolve differences. That doesn't exist here. The current review board really has no statutory power and authority. So, the Police Commission, again, allows for the transparency, accountability, allows an outlet, not only for the community and the citizens, but also allows an outlet for the police officers. In the past, when I've pushed this issue forward, bringing back the Police Commission, we have members of the police union saying, yes, we want a Police Commission to come back. I don't know where they stand at this day, but in the past, there certainly have been advocates as well to bring back the Police Commission. I mean, if you think about it, this community review board, all they deal with is discipline. They see police officers in the worst light. Anytime there's a complaint put forward, anytime there's an accusation of infraction of the rules, and that's all they see. That in itself kind of sets relationships up in a negative way, when all you're dealing is with negative situations. Police Commission actually does hiring. And that's a good thing when you get hired for a job, right? So, it's a whole different flavor. It's also promotions, and it's also working with police officers to have community events. So, again, not a perfect system, no such thing. It's certainly a much better system. It's certainly needed, and it's something that I fully support. And again, I just want to thank President Fenton and my colleagues in government for moving forward on this. Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you. First of all...
I have a question for you, sir. Will a commissioner head for the known as Commissioner or Chief of Police?
Let the president handle that.
I hate to interrupt Counselor Williams here. We'll take more questions after, but he will be effective. The effective date of this isn't until the end of John Barbieri's contract, so that's May 31, 2019.
Thank you.
And at that point, the position would be converted to a chief, and there are some nuances to that, but...
Thank you very much.
First, I just want to thank the president and all those who have lined up today, and I think Jose really paraphrased it and put it with light. I just want to underscore one thing, and what I think, other than transparency, people, I feel, have lost faith and confidence in the review board, and what we need to begin is a healing process, because this city is really divided, and I know many of us have talked to people within the community. People want a Police Commission that's representative of the people, that have real powers, powers to hire, fire, and to discipline. This is not casting any aspersions on the men and women in blue. They do a great job. They do a great job with public safety. But I think in order to restore confidence, so we all can work together, begin the healing process, we need to bring back the Police Commission, the old Police Commission, that has powers to hire, to fire, and to promote, and as Jose said, to promote good activities. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say that I think all the references that the council president made to voting for the Police Commission, I voted for, because I was there for all those votes. I have a feeling that after this initiative, we will not be voting again to establish a Police Commission, because one will be ineffective. And I think we should take a minute to reflect and think about what it is to be a police officer today, to recognize that they have a very dangerous job, that there has been a real shift in society in the way the police have been viewed across the country, and that we stand behind them in doing whatever we can to make sure that they are safe on the job. But I do feel that this Police Commission will make for better relationships within the community, which will help them in their job, and that I hope that when it is passed, that good people are appointed to the Commission, because that will be the key. And as far as I know, there has never been a lack of good people willing to come forward and serve the city of Springfield.
I just want to start off by thanking my colleagues and Mr. President for orchestrating this particular piece of legislation. For me personally, I appreciate what the president said, but this is an indictment on Commissioner Barbieri. I've called, I've said it before, and I'll say it again. I strongly believe that after this particular incident with Detective Bigga, that his disciplinary powers should be stripped. And with this legislation that we're putting forward today, I'm able to achieve that particular objective, or we are able to achieve that particular objective, which I think is critical. I think what has happened before I saw the tape, it was very clear that something needed to be done, and it happened that it was a commission. After I've seen the tape, it's even more evident that something has gone wrong when it comes to discipline and supervision of our officers. I agree with Caterie that the vast majority of our officers do the right thing, but when we do have that bad apple, we need something in place to hold those particular individuals accountable, and right now, we do not have that. So, I am fully supportive of this commission, and I am hopeful that the mayor will implement it once we override his veto.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just want to thank my colleagues for coming together around this very important issue. I want to thank President Fenton for his leadership, and I want to thank Representative Tossado and Mr. Henry Thomas for being here in support of this piece of legislation. I want to express my support for this ordinance, which is something that is a good first step in helping us build trust and repair the relationship between our community and our law enforcement officers. There are many other things that we have to do to accomplish that, but this is a very good first step. For me, this is my second time signing on to this ordinance, and so the events that I have unraveled in the media over the last few weeks are not my sole reason for supporting the ordinance. For me, it's more about fixing the system that has been broken for some time, and I'm glad that we're taking steps to accomplish that. And I look forward to debating this issue on the floor. Thank you.
Good morning, or good afternoon. I'm Henry Thomas. I just want, for the record, establish that I'm the president of the Urban League, and I'm here on behalf of the Urban League. And my amorous connection is the University of Mass trustee for the University of Mass Board. I just want to first commend the president of the city council, Mike Fenton, and esteemed councilors standing behind me for going forward to reestablish a commission that has teeth, that has enforcement capabilities, and has the interest of the general public at hand at all times. I served on the commission for six years. I chaired it for the last three of those six years, and I know that a commission that can really project transparency and accountability is a commission that can really be effective and do better good for the community in contrast to a commission that's only advisory. I think also, lastly, that this is an equity issue. Every citizen in Springfield, or every citizen, period, who happens to be in Springfield is entitled to be treated equitably under the law. And equitable treatment means not intimidating, not brutalizing, or doing anything that would be done under the color of law. And I think that if you have a transparent, if we have a transparent system and we have a commission that has teeth, then it will contain that kind of behavior and weed it out when it does happen. So, thank you for inviting me to be part of that and a part of this, and I'm very proud of my city councilors for being brave enough to step forward again and try to get this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
Thank you to my esteemed colleagues, media. I'm Ward 1 City Councilor Adam Gomez. I think it's important that we support this, because these are not just individual decisions made by this body. This is coming from our constituents. This is coming from a lot of people that wear the badge, and I'm kind of proud for being a first-time councilor, being able to support this. I'm a son of a former police commissioner. I grew up in a neighborhood that this is, this type of legislature is very important, and I represent the city of Springfield, where we know that this type of legislature is going to make sure that the transparency of the police department and the city of Springfield is going to further ahead in the future of what we're trying to accomplish here in our city. I want to thank Representative Jose Tossado and Henry Thomas for taking the time to joining us and allying on this piece of legislature. I think it's very important that we understand that, you know, the ripple effect and the rhetoric that's going to be stated after this is going to be in a negative light. In no way, no how, we are vilifying our police department or anybody in government. What we're trying to accomplish here is to make sure that the people are being heard, and not one way, never, ever, is it a bad time to stand up for the people, because this is for the people. Thank you, and have a good afternoon.
Very nice.
I'd like to echo what my colleagues have said, that I also am very proud to stand and with the representatives and the colleagues that are behind me. The reason that we're here is because of the deficiencies that have been identified in the system that's in place, and anytime you find something is broken that needs to be functional, common sense would suggest that you would try to do something different or at least fix it. I'm most concerned with the fact that processes and systems that are in place don't identify officers that should not be officers. I think this is a first step in the direction that we need to move. I applaud and appreciate the hard work and the dedication of the officers that do what they are trained to do, what they take an oath to do, but to recognize also that everybody who is a police officer is not, or should not be, an officer. And if we don't have a system in place that easily recognizes who they are and a process that legally allows us to take them off the force before there is some type of high-profile situation or occurrence, then we fail as leaders in the city. So, I first have great appreciation for all who put their lives on the line, who do a job that everybody here cannot do, but for those who can't do it, should not be doing it, we do need to address that, and this is a step in that direction. I have great appreciation for the leadership of my president, Mr. Fenton, all my colleagues, my representatives, and I just want to thank them, and I want to thank the public for their support, their commentary, and their outreach to us, to let us know how important this is. This is not going to be easy, and it's not going to be well-received by everyone, but I beg for people's patience as we try to put something in place that would make you proud of us as your elected officials. Thank you.
Good job, Melvin.
Nice job.
Hi, I'm Tim Allen, Ward 7 Counselor for the city of Springfield. What is a city counselor? What is our job? Most government things go along fine, but in any situation, in government or in business, most things go fine and some things don't. And when some things don't go fine, it's our job as a city council in this government to provide oversight, whether it be financial oversight, police oversight, or other kinds of oversight. Obviously, some things weren't going so hot, and we've decided to take action. It's our role, it's how government works. There are different roles for different bodies, and this is our role, to make laws that make and support good government in the city of Springfield. This is not, I would like to commend the good police officers who are doing their job every day. I personally would like to commend the people on the Community Police Hearing Board, who have worked hard to do the right thing. They're just caught in a system which isn't set upright. This ordinance will set it upright. This ordinance will change the system so citizens have the objective oversight of the police. The current system isn't set that way. It's a little too skewed towards the influence and the decision-making being made by basically the same people. The oversight and the day-to-day running and the oversight are done in many ways by the same people. True oversight is done by other people, and that's what this will put in place. So, I'm proud of my colleagues, I'm proud of my president for working hard on this, my colleagues for working hard on behalf of the citizens of Springfield. I truly hope that this will be taken in the spirit of which it is. Good government, fair treatment for everybody in Springfield. Thank you.
Good job, Melvin.
Okay, I wanted to fix an error earlier. I did not recognize Counselor Marcus Williams is also a cosponsor of this from Ward 5. He is unable to join us. I, again, want to personally thank Henry and Jose for coming today, for their leadership in the past on this subject. Jose was one of the first people to introduce this concept to me years ago on the council. Took a shot on a young kid from Hungry Hill to be finance chair when I wasn't really sure what I was doing. I thought I knew what I was doing. And to the people that have carried the torch since then, this hasn't been, you know, a one-person effort or even a six-person effort. There's a lot of people that have put time into this over the years, and there's a lot of people on the council that put in hours to get us and this legislation where it is today. I want to also specifically thank Councilors Hurst and Ramos for pushing me and each other to help get to a place where this was legislation that made sense, and that was something that they took up the initiative to do, and I want to thank them for that. So, with that said, here we are. This is the legislation. What do you got? Peter?
In the past, I believe the mayor has raised legal challenges about usurping his powers. Do you see any of that returning out, and what would be your response?
I think the term he used last time was "the buck stops with me and dead on arrival." That's what he said. Buck stops with me, dead on arrival. I will tell you that that's an unfortunate perspective. We hope to work collaboratively with the mayor's office. We think that this is a solution that benefits the taxpayers, the residents, increases transparency for the SPD, restores and preserves its good name, and we hope that he will be enlightened to that reality. To the extent that he is not, we will enlighten him.
Are you certain in your views that you're on sound legal ground with this ordinance?
The argument that's made again and again by this administration with respect to this proposal is that the council does not have the charter powers to legislate this matter. It's an interesting concept, because for decades, we have, in the past. This was the system that was in effect. So, we have received legal advice in the past from the solicitor on this subject. I expect that we will get some in the coming days on this particular proposal. I see no right reason why it would be inconsistent with his advice in the past. I believe that we had the right to do it then, and we have the right to do it now, and if the mayor wants to veto it, he has the right to do that. We have the right to override said veto. If he refuses to enforce this legislation after a veto override vote by this body, we're prepared to take any means necessary to enforce.
Could you have determined a scenario in the city, had you waited, assulated, and put this off for months? Any...
So, we had this press conference. This press conference has been planned for quite some time, predating the release of the video involving certain police officers in the town of Palmer. We believe that it's important, and that we did not want to postpone in light of that. Actually, we think it's even more timely and relevant, given those events. So, delay is not an option. We have a lot of support. I believe that everyone that's standing up here is here, because they know that this matters. Police Commission matters, and it's important. And it's important to our city and to the dangers that we face, and to our department, and our transparency in government, and the credibility of the city of Springfield is at stake. And we believe for that reason that time is of the essence. We have been working on this for over eight years.
How disappointed are you that you don't have 13 councilors here today?
I'm not disappointed at all. I have to say that I can't think of another piece of legislation where we've had this many people behind it. I'd have to think a little bit harder. I'm not disappointed at all, so I can tell you that I'm thrilled with the support. There isn't an example of when folks in government get along that's... You know, it's difficult to find this type of consensus, and we've done a lot of consensus building, thanks to the credit to everybody that's up here, the good work that people have done before us, that Councilors Hurst and Ramos and others have done this time around, and it's going to continue. So, I'm thrilled with the support. Kind of caught me off guard, because I'm so proud of how many people are up here. I couldn't believe how we would construe it.
Is this on the agenda for Monday night?
This is on the agenda for Monday evening.
And you expect that you'll be referring it to the Public Safety Committee?
No, we're ready to go.
That committee is on record opposing the Police Commission.
We're ready to go. We do not want this to go to committee. We want to take first step Monday night, and then at the next opportunity, at the meeting that would be...
December 4th.
Nobody knows the calendar better than Counselor Allen. I think it's...
Unless we do a special.
Yeah, unless we had a reason to do a special, it would be December 5th. December 5th, Monday, December 5th, would be the second meeting where we would hopefully pass it.
So, you're not planning any additional public hearings, no additional chance for public input other than a speak-out prior to Monday night's meeting?
Yeah, and the following Monday night's meeting, so that would be on the 5th. That gives us almost a month of public vetting and feedback. The reason that we don't feel that it's necessary at this point to do that type of research is because of the timeline that I outlined for you at the beginning. We have done this. There were stenographers at these meetings. We have been out and had meetings at Frederick Harris, and in Ward 2, and here in City Hall. And so, we feel confident that the public is aware of what this is. The proposal has been vetted, and it's just a matter of being decisive at this point.
You've mentioned the previous attempts to have this announcement. It has been, well, it's gone into repeat because you don't, well, it would survive with the mayor veto. You say that you have the votes to override the veto at this point?
Without a doubt.
The other, your date of 2019 takes into mind the contract that the mayor signed with the police, with the current Police Commissioner.
Correct.
And some viewed it as an attempt to circumvent whatever effort it was to try and restore the Police Commission. How confident are you that he may... How confident are you that he may not, for lack of a better phrase, pull the same trick over before the current commissioner's contract expires?
Well, that's not a concern, because should he do that, if the law was in effect, it wouldn't be, the legislation wouldn't be preempted by the contracts clause under the Constitution. The contracts clause, under Article 1, only applies to legislation that's passed after you have a signed contract. So we're passing this on the front end. If two parties, the mayor and a commissioner, sign it after they know what the law is and it's codified, they do so at their peril. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be concerned with that risk, Kari.
What changed in terms of the number of councillors that came up? Who decided that this would be indeed a good idea to be behind this?
We've had a majority, we've had a majority, and maybe even a veto-proof majority for quite some time. We may have had it back in March of 2014, when we last brought this matter up. The reason that it wasn't deliberated on at that time was because timeliness was no longer a factor, given the fact that we knew Commissioner Barbieri had just been given a five-year contract, and we wouldn't be able to implement until 2016 at the earliest. So we're approaching, excuse me, 2019 at the earliest. We were approaching that date. It may seem far off for a lot of folks, but we want to make sure that there's time to implement this system and make that transition between now and the time that Commissioner Barbieri's contract expires. I should say, this legislation also involves dissolving the ordinance that codifies the position of police commissioner. So there would be no more formal role for a police commissioner in the city of Springfield that would be replaced by a civil service police chief. Same system we had before.
I may be wrong on this. I know you'll correct me on that, but in some earlier proposals, going back a few years to the reception of the police commission, was it part of this to give some appointees to the other commissioners, other than the mayor?
Yes.
Is that, so why has this been changed so that the mayor gets all five appointees?
Sometimes in government, they say, you know, seeing how, you know, that phrase where they say, "nobody wants to see how the sausage is made," so to speak, the legislation. It's, there was a lot of back and forth on that subject, I can tell you internally. And while many may prefer a system that involves appointees that are from an entity other than exclusively the mayor's office, there were a variety of other concerns that we were trying to balance, not the least of which is potential litigation if he refuses to enforce this. So we've crafted a law that we think is very strong and would survive legal challenge.
And you're saying that giving the power to, the exclusive power to appoint would, would prevent him from, him or whoever the mayor is at the time, to prevent him from doing his job if he decides he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to engage in this in terms of fulfilling his obligation under the proposed ordinance?
The main argument put forward by the law department the last two times was that a proposal to revive the police commission infringes on the mayor's charter powers, which the council cannot do without a state, a citywide referendum to change the charter. That premise is based on a charter provision that says that the mayor shall appoint boards and commissions. So I'm not conceding the point that it's possible to get around that in certain instances. There are commissions that involve appointments that are not made by the mayor, and there are commissions, mainly the ZBA Historic Commission and others, that are subject to council confirmation after mayoral appointment. But the safest legal way to approach appointments is to vest them in a way that's consistent with the charter, allowing for the mayor to have the appointment. So that's why we've, that's why we've done it that way, and we think that it puts us in a position to address a lot of the concerns that were previously raised in the solicitors' former legal opinions. And that's how it was done before, and we liked that system, and we're comfortable with it. And for that reason, a lot of people were, for this type of change, a lot of people were more comfortable with sticking with the known, known process as opposed to something totally new.